Hello and thank you for tuning in to the Concord Board of Education Forum for 2022. My name is Tony Shanella, the local editor of Concord New Hampshire Patch. This event is cosponsored by Patch, Concord TV, and WKXL 1450, as we've done in the last few years, to provide you the opportunity to hear from candidates and have them ask thorough questions in a conversational manner. We thank you for listening and for viewing, and we thank our sponsorship as well as Concord TV again for doing this this year. This year voters in Concord have two competitive races for school board and district seats, covering District B, which is Ward's five, six, and seven, and District C, which is Ward's eight, whoops, sorry, eight, nine, and 10, right. And we have them here tonight, and they're going to be answering all the same questions that we have, but we've split them up into sections over at the table. The Ward one, two, three, District A candidate, Jim Richards, who's the president of the board, is running unopposed, so we did not invite him to participate. He's going to win anyway. In Concord, there are two things we want to remind you about. Voters in Ward five have moved to Krista McAuliffe Elementary School to vote, and voters in Ward four have moved to the Green Street Station behind City Hall to vote. So remember that when you go to the polls this year. Let's do introductions real quick. To my right, we have David Parker and Cara Mieker, who are running for the District B seat, and next to them are Virginia Cannon and Sarah Robinson, who are running for the District C seat. As I said, Jim Richards is not, he's not, he's unopposed this year. Let's start with opening statements of around two minutes. David, is ladies first okay with you?
It's fine with me.
All right. Cara, start us off.
Oh, thank you. Well, Tony, thank you for having me. I'm excited to be here with everybody today. My name is Cara Mieker. If you didn't hear it for the first time, I'm running for District B. I'm running for Concord School Board for the same reasons that a lot of people run for the board. I care about public education. I care about children. I'm a parent in the district. I live in Ward seven in the South End with my husband, Tom Dagel, and our daughter Evelyn. She's a fourth grader at Abbott Downing. I really feel like the school board would be a good fit for my skill set. I have several years' experience in a nonpartisan capacity in the state legislative environment. I've worked on many long public meetings. I'm comfortable reading and writing policy, looking at budgets. You know, it's just kind of my wheelhouse. So because I really care about public service, I really thought, why not just throw my hat in the ring and see how it goes? And that's a little bit about me.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Tony, and thank you for, Cara, for joining us tonight. I'm running for the school board because I as well care about the community. I care about public education and children. I've been a lifelong educator, and I've served on this board over the past three years. As most of you are aware, the last three years have been incredibly challenging, not only for our community and school district, but for our nation and world. We've had to get through pandemic, and on the board, we've had to make some very difficult decisions. And I think what we learned from that is that you, that some of the time, you're going to make people happy, and some of the time, you're not going to make people happy. But we work very hard to try to bring perspective to the administration when we're sitting on the board. I've been an active participant in boards in Concord through most of my life. I've contributed in many ways, and I decided I would like to spend another three years on the board, in part because we had, we made a lot of difference. We had had a lot of changes. The administrative team, numbers of people retired. We've added a superintendent, assistant superintendent, a number of people that I think I would like to work with for another term. And so that's my incentive for staying involved in the school board. But mostly to give back. I'd be on a board, if not on that board, if I don't get elected, I'll find another board to be on. So thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Let's go to Sarah.
Thanks, Tony, and thanks to everyone here for, you know, dedication and service to our community, right? That's really why we all are, you know, throwing our hats in the ring, because we care deeply about our school district. Concord's a really special community. My husband's a graduate of Concord High School, 1998. I grew up really nearby in Boe. I'm incredibly familiar with this area, and this is the place we chose to raise our kids. I have two kiddos that are in Millbrook and Broken Ground Schools. I live in Ward 10. I have an interesting set of skills that I believe endears me to the role. My career has allowed me to follow education policy for several years, from its, LSR's introduction, all the way through the legislative process, to its implementation and the impacts that they have on districts across the state. And I'm tasked with understanding that policy, interpreting it, and sharing that information with people, and sharing that specifically with board, school board members across the state. You know, I encourage those folks to, you know, follow their heart, lead with kiddos first, and I thought it behooves me if I am working with those people to put myself in the same position, to serve my community in this capacity. I'm also a trained facilitator, and I have some significant experience in racial and social justice work. We have a lot of difficult decisions that are coming through our district soon, you know, and that's been consistent with the past several years and the terms that you both just served. Those difficult decisions won't be coming to an end, and I'd like to be a part of decision making so that we can position our district to the advantage, so we can be on the offense moving forward. So thank you. I hope I can count on everyone's vote on November 8.
So thank you all for being under two minutes. That was awesome. Real quick, we're going to start with David.
I don't think Gina got a chance.
Thanks, Tony.
This is, I had the seats bitted in the wrong way.
Okay. So I'm Gina Cannon. I live in Ward 10 as well, District C, and I am just coming off a three-year rotation with the board. You know, as Dave, I was elected the same time Dave was, and it was a very, very tumultuous time for our district. And we've been through a lot. We didn't know the pandemic was coming on top of the prior crisis, but we've been in crisis mode in the district for a while. And we, as a board, have tasked the school district with quite a few initiatives. We've asked them to change quite a bit of the culture of the school district. And I guess that, like Dave, that's part of the reason why I want to run again, because I'd like to see some of that come to fruition. Strategic plan, the DEIJ position, looking at school safety, looking at changes in the curriculum. We've tasked, as a board, the school district administration with making massive changes across the board. And being able to see those solidify and be able to move forward from the initiation into actually the implementation of the vision that the board had is part of why I'm rerunning. The other part is that I believe our school districts are part of the foundation of our community. We have the municipal government, we have our hospital, we have our businesses, and we have our school district. That's really what supports the Concord community here. And our school district needs to be just as strong as the other three legs in the foundation. And I think it's a way to give back to the community. My husband also has lived here his whole life, as has Dave, and I don't know, I don't want to.
I'm sure that question's coming.
So anyway, it's just a way to give back to a community that feels like it's the right decision for me. So that's why I'm running again.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So very quickly, I just want to establish whether or not you have children. I know that Sarah essentially has two children in elementary schools, but can you each, and we'll start with Dave and go across, have you had or do you have children in the school system, or did you educate your children at private school? Just real quick, you don't have to go into it just yes or no, or yeah, my kids, if you can just go around, so we know.
I had three children. One of them graduated from Concord High, two of them graduated from a local parochial school. They are long beyond graduation at this point. I'm a senior citizen.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to rub that in.
Rub away.
You have women with younger children here.
I'm still plugging away.
As I already mentioned, my daughter Evelyn is in fourth grade at Abbott Downing School.
Thank you.
I have a 17-year-old who is through the Concord School District at an out-of-district placement.
And my kiddos currently are going to Broken Ground and Millbrook Schools respectively, but before that, we lived in Ward five, and so before that, we went to Krista McAuliffe Schools. So we've been very lucky in that we've gotten a chance to experience two of the small elementary school communities in our town, and it's an embarrassment of riches. Very lucky.
Thank you. Let's talk about property taxes for a second. So Concord residents are currently facing some of the highest property taxes ever in the history of the city. Renters are also feeling the pinch, too. They pay property taxes indirectly. This is due to a whole bunch of different things going on, including evaluations increasing, lack of housing inventory, which led to higher pricing before the recession started, and also increasing school and city budgets. We can argue about whether or not, you know, the budget should be increased what they are, but this question's more of a general theme. This kind of perfect storm has really hit a lot of our senior citizens, who are people who built the city and they're unable to afford to stay. In the next three years, what can you do to rein in the school budget, specifically finding cost savings and/or working on other strategies to kind of dampen the, you know, six to eight percent increases that property taxpayers are dealing with each year? And we'll start with Sarah and go this way.
Sure. Yeah, thanks for the question. It's a really good one. I know I feel it as a homeowner, and I'm grateful that you mentioned that renters feel the pinch, too, because they do pay property taxes in our community as well. I understand that fixed income living is incredibly difficult and can be scary when you're faced with, you know, the potential of needing to leave your home because you can't afford your property taxes, and that's something to be taken really seriously. I think we also need to acknowledge that our state has a really regressive form of taxation when it comes to how we fund education in general. So I think the conversation should be balanced with, yes, we have an issue with our increasing property taxes, and as a state, we should be having conversations around how we address that overall. That being said, there, one of the acknowledgements that can be made is that school districts are now footing the full bill for the retirement of teachers, which has been a huge cost increase over time. And in the scheme of things, Concord is sort of middle of the road as far as property taxes are concerned, and yet, and it still feels enormous, whereas villages around us are paying significantly more in percentage. What we can do is we can be creative, and I know that the district works diligently to utilize grant funding when available, so that initiatives or efforts within the district aren't immediately thrown on the taxpayer. And, you know, that's something that I hope we continue to utilize. And also, we need to have open conversations with our community about what is school for us? What should kiddos be able to do and know when they leave, which is, I think, a conversation that hasn't necessarily been had in our district before? And I think when we have community buy-in and more community involvement in the way those decisions are made, like the why of school, then we can become clearer in the way our moral document of a budget looks and how the community feels about that document.
Great. Virginia?
So I'm going to kind of piggyback a little bit on what you're saying, but I'm also going to digress a little. So the vast majority of our budget, which ends up in taxpayer expense, is salaries and benefits for our staff, and primarily our teachers. That is the bulk of our budget. So part of the problem is, in fact, retirement system, which is something that's completely out of the school district's hands. The legislature actually used to fund it, then it decreased its percentage of what it was going to fund, and now, although there's, it looks like there may be a one-time donation to the retirement system, that's not a long-term solution. And so it's completely out of the hands of the school district. The state tells us, you must contribute X, and that percentage has been going up every year. That's not something, unfortunately, the school district has any real, any control whatsoever over. The other piece, though, is I think it's less what, unfortunately, what the citizens want our school to be and do. The legislature is, in fact, legislating what the school district must provide to the students. If you look at the recent laws that have been passed about what the school is and isn't allowed to do and what it must and must not do, it is increasingly the legislature deciding cost shifting onto the local taxpayer. I'm really, I mean, Concord is unique in the entire state in that the school district is an autonomous unit that sets the tax rate. So in one way, the buck stops at the board, because we're required to come up with X amount. But most of that is either salaries, and we want to attract and maintain the best quality teachers and staff for our kids that we can possibly afford. The other piece is what the state has downshifted onto the taxpayers. I have to tell you, I've said this before, every budget season, I lose about 10 pounds because I can't eat, because it makes me so sick to my stomach. The risks that we are rolling onto our taxpayers is really awesome, but the vast majority of that is something the school board doesn't really have any control over.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm very much in agreement with what has been said so far. I have been doing my best to deep dive into the school budget as this process has begun, and, you know, the board is as efficient as they possibly can be. And so from my mind, as things get tighter in our households with everything that we're sort of projecting coming up with inflation and increased assessments, you know, that we are going to have to be more creative about sort of our aspirations for what we want to offer our students. We, you know, I'm sure the board does an excellent job already with connecting with existing organizations to provide services that we, you know, make, want to make sure the kids have. I know we also benefited greatly from having free lunch for everybody at elementary school last year because of federal help. It was amazing. And just to like have that opportunity to see what it looks like to have something like really well-funded and provided was, you know, inspirational, and then to have it retract is like, ugh, you know. So, you know, being creative and, you know, finding more, you know, the relationship building, finding more grants, you know, being as lean as we can be while also already acknowledging that I think the board is pretty lean, you know, operates lean as it is, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with a lot that's being said. As I sit on the board, it's a, you have to think a certain way, which is every decision is going to impact the taxpayer. So when we, for example, got, we hired a grant administrator, which was a terrific move on the administration and the board's part, but all those grants are going to end. And one of the things we have to be really scrutinizing is what's going to happen when they do end, and what is our obligation to these, to the students and the families? And we want to be the best we can be, but everything comes with a price tag. So frequently, when I'm in a meeting, I'm going to scrutinize them, and I'm going to say, like I did the other night, all right, that's a great program. How many kids is it serving? How long has it been around? How is that money going to be spent? You know, we have to scrutinize, not because, you know, we're being difficult, but because we have to always consider the taxpayers. And it is frustrating that so much is out of our control. We need to negotiate with a, you know, a school union, a teachers' union that wants the best for the teachers, as we do, but that doesn't mean that we can give everything away either. And I think, you know, across the board, whether it's going to make a huge impact on our taxes or a marginal, you know, impact on taxes, all decisions need to be looked at through the lens of cost. And sometimes I think, not that we forget that, but, you know, most of us run households. I pay taxes, a lot of taxes, property taxes, and it impacts all of us. And so I just think we have to, given the limitations, we still have to have that in the forefront of our thinking for most decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Want to just follow up? We'll do David and then go across, real quick on this. There's a woman who wrote a column in, from Pennacook about a year and change ago, suggesting that the Concord School District and the Merrimack Valley School District should consider mending the divide between the village and the community by merging the school districts. As most people know, Pennacook has a higher tax rate because of Merrimack Valley. Most of that's due to the size of the smaller, smaller costs, the smaller size of the school student body, as well as the small towns that are involved in it, as well as the village. But there's also a competition between the city as well as Pennacook for commercial development to increase the tax base and other issues. No one seems to, it seems, no one's really looked at it or even really taken a dive into it. Do you think the board should?
I'm not sure the board should, or the city should, or we all should, but the idea of too many SAUs has been on the plate for many, many years. You know, we have, every SAU has their own administrative team. All tasks have to be independent of other SAUs. I mean, we work very collaboratively with MV, on the other hand, when we have mutual interests, but, I mean, it's a much larger question than I think we have to answer at not only our local school district level, but also with the city and with the state. And I have mixed feelings about combining SAUs, but I do sometimes feel that some of the things that we do are duplicated at an expense. And so, you know, it would be an enormous task, but, you know, it's, I'm not opposed to considering something like that.
Thank you. Cara?
Well, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to the board considering any matter that would, you know, result in a potential cost savings, but also acknowledging how much of a heavy lift that would be to make those changes. You know, I'm still learning about the relationship between Pennacook and Concord. As we sort of discussed earlier, I'm relatively new as a permanent resident to Concord. My husband was born and raised here, but we've been living here for about a year and a half as well. So right now, I'm just learning everything that I can and hearing all the ideas that are coming from the community that I'm building. You know, I've also heard ideas about what if we had more than one middle school? What if we, you know, shifted? You know, there's conversations about the river divide. You know, these are all fascinating topics to me. I love research. I look forward to learning as much as I can about it, and as a board member, anytime an idea like that comes to the table, you know, I think, you know, it's worth doing due diligence on it.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think it's been floated several times by several different groups of people and with several different agenda ideas. It's certainly something that can be discussed and looked at, but I think the concept of the cost saving that's done through consolidation is often at the cost of local control. So the concern would be for me, who loses? Not who gains from that. Cost-saving wise, we would all gain from that, but who loses their local control? Who loses their local school? Who loses their involvement in their community when the consolidation gets too big? That would be my concern.
I love the idea of one city, one district. I know that folks in Pennacook pay municipal taxes in Concord, and yet they still have a higher tax rate for a system that struggles to meet its financial obligations to its students. I think it's a worthy conversation to have, and cooperative school districts do function successfully across the state, and the sharing of resources, I think, is never a bad idea. You know, we just talked about property taxes. If we can combine all of our efforts together to ensure a stronger education experience and lowering cost for most of us, I'd say that's a win. There's also a significant physical plant that exists that could also be utilized. I think folks don't need to lose their public school. They don't need to lose their neighborhood school if we just change the organizational structure of an SAU. I think it's an absolute possibility. Yeah, heavy lift, but, you know, anything worth doing certainly isn't easy, but I would absolutely entertain that conversation, and I think it could have myriad benefits for our district and the other.
Thank you, Sarah. We're going to start with you with the next question. Everybody who works in the SAU eight, as well as in the community at large, wants educational excellence for our kids. But in online rankings over the past few years, Concord schools have been declining, even though we're spending more money than we've ever been before. Concord High School is an example, was just listed as 24th on the NIECH list, which is an online education platform that rates and ranks schools, and they use a pretty extensive methodology to do it. It's not just a couple of things. It's like 190 different, you know, target or whatever. I don't remember exactly, but that is down from 2015, when the high school was in 22nd. U.S. News and World Report also ranked Concord High School this year at 55th, which is down from a few years ago as 50, which was 52 in the state before. Runlet, the Runlet Middle School was also ranked by NIECH as at 58th this year. Admittedly, rankies, rankies can be, you know, selective, and, but they are a benchmark. What do you think the district can do to improve rankings while striving for educational excellence?
So I appreciate the attempt to gauge our district against others. That's, you know, the process of comparison can be helpful for understanding where we're falling short or where we are excelling. I hesitate to fall too deeply into rankings as a metric to, is this district serving the community by the means with which the community has identified? I also struggle when, accepting rankings when those rankings are based on standardized testing alone. Standardized testing isn't an equitable or ethical form of assessment, in my view. Sorry to tap the microphone. I know that Concord is one of the first adopters of the PACE program for assessment, which is more project and experiential-based, and unfortunately, that effort has been sort of not as robust as I would have hoped it would be. So I think when we're looking at excellence, when we're looking at proficiency, and we're looking at what kiddos can know and do when they leave our schools, I think that's a conversation that needs to be had at a district level, and we get, as a community, get to decide what proficiency and excellence looks like for us and for our kids. So, you know, rankings can be good in some instance, but they are also incredibly biased, and a lot of the times, they're, they're used as a way for those organizations to sell an idea. And I'm more locally and community-minded than a national sort of observation of, I don't know if those folks are walking through our school hallways, and if they are, you know, are there recommendations for how our ranking changes? So yeah, that's, that's where I stand on that.
Well, I've got to say, like, really well done.
Oh, thanks.
I, I think the rankings, I mean, that's great. It sells U.S. News and World Report to people who are already reading U.S. News and World Report. I totally agree. I don't know that that reflects, are we doing the best thing for our kids and our community? I don't get U.S. News and World Report, so I don't really care about their ranking. What I care about is, are our kids going through our school system, are they learning what they need to learn? Are they growing in a way that they're going to become well-rounded, solid, grounded citizens who have the ability to grab a hold of their potential future and ride that train as far as it can go? I don't really care what U.S. News and World Report says. That having been said, the fact that we may be, again, falling short in places, that's important for us to take a look at, and where are we, where are we needing to add additional support for our kids so that they can, they can go wherever they want to go and do what they want to do? they can, they can go wherever they want to go and do whatever they want to do and grab their potential? If that's what we're providing, and that's hopefully what we're providing, then we're doing a good job, and rankings fall where the rankings fall.
I agree. I want to see those reports before I speak to those numbers, but, you know, I, just like anybody, when I'm looking at a school district, when we were exploring moving, you know, I check the ratings, but it's really just a glance. You know, it's like, what is this? You know, it's hard to know what's behind it. But when you start talking to people who live here, when you start talking to students who go to school here, and they feel inspired and they are inspiring, you know, I've actually took Gina's advice, and I've been watching old school board meetings just to, you know, just to fall asleep at night. And, no, just to learn and grow. And often, there's a student who is giving some kind of presentation at those board meetings, and
Some of those presentations are awesome.
They're just incredible. And so, it really speaks to who the children are as individuals rather than who they are as a number. You know, I also went to a school where, you know, we weren't necessarily world-class, but, you know, we all went on to become accountants and investment bankers and artists and, you know, thespians. And so, you know, it's tough to match those rankings with the incredible people that you become when you leave that district. And so, if you're grounded and you are given the critical thinking skills and the inner confidence to go out into the world, then that's all the ranking that I would require. That being said, if we rank higher on something so that we can get money from grants and stuff, you know, we could always look at those numbers again, yeah.
My turn. We rank everything. And I think the question for me becomes more, are we, and I agree with most of what people say, rankings can mean something. You have to look at the criteria first to see what it is. On the other hand, keeping our district accountable to growth and improvement is another story. And I think, over the past three years, we've actually really looked at that. We want to see if our money is being spent well, and are we keeping our departments accountable? And give us the meat. Show us the information. We're not just going to listen to it. People can tell you all sorts of things, but unless you have means of assessing it, accurate means of assessing it. You know, I have a fair amount of experience with education and with testing, from psychological testing to standardized testing. And depending on who you are and where you are in your education, it can be meaningful information. But a lot of times, we're using assessment tools that aren't applicable to the people we're testing and/or, as you say, equitable. And so, we as board members need to say that, and we need to scrutinize it, because rankings, albeit are vague at best, they say something. And if we look carefully at the rankings, then we can maybe scrutinize them and get some feedback, because you're not always going to hear the bad news unless you search for it. You're not always going to hear the good news unless you search for it. You have to ask the right questions, and I think I ask a lot of those right questions, and people oftentimes don't want to hear those questions, but I'm not afraid to ask them. So, thank you.
Thank you. David, we'll go to you for this one. The district is considering increasing the number of credits needed to graduate at Concord High School. Currently, it's 20, which is the state minimum. One school official stated that most high schools in New Hampshire require between 24 and 28, but that actually isn't backed up with real data. The New Hampshire Department of Education doesn't track that. It was later cited as personal knowledge. But that being said, it's an unknown how many, what each high school requires. Most Concord High School graduates get between 26 and 27 when they graduate. At the same time, about 5% graduate with the 20 credits, and a half of 1% each year do not graduate. Should the district consider revising the credits or stick to the current minimum standards?
Well, if we're just going to be looking at credits, I think, again, like other assessment tools and performance evaluations, credits are one way of looking at the quality of someone's education and the acquired skills that they get through competencies. We do want to require a certain basic level of competencies for someone to graduate. On the other hand, you have to be careful that you're not requiring things that students aren't going to be achieved and therefore will not graduate. So I think we are setting minimum standards with our credits. And, you know, I'm more concerned that the average student is learning their math and learning rather than for the small percentage of people that need more advanced classes. So, I think the credit issue, again, like the statistical assessment, has to be looked at for who we're going to measure for. As you say, right now, there's 20 credits, but most students earn a lot more. You get a little bit, it gets a little bit challenging if you put the credit level too high for everyone. Surprisingly, you know, we want our kids to gra, not surprisingly, we want our kids to graduate and get out into the community and do good things, and credits are not always reflective of that. So, I'm sort of mixed. I would have to dig deeper into it to really have an opinion. I have an opinion on everything, but how I feel about that.
I also, I read about that in the monitor. I think it's a great discussion to have. I also would want to look at the broader conversation of, you know, how many people are just meeting the minimum versus how many, you know, are doing so much more? And then, by raising that minimum requirement, what that means in terms of, like, increased support, increased staffing in order to make that achievable for our students? I think it's important not to necessarily raise a requirement without providing the proper supports in order to accomplish that task. You know, if it's, if the structure's already in place and everyone's pretty much already achieving a higher level anyway, I can understand, you know, maybe raising it, but, you know, I'm curious about the "if it ain't broke, don't fix it" aspect to it.
So, I guess I have a slightly different take. One of the things that the board has currently done through their policy committee is crafted a whole slew of additional opportunities outside the traditional classroom box for acquiring credits and showing competencies. So, once that infrastructure is up and running, I really don't have a problem increasing the requirement, the credit requirements, as long as kids that wouldn't or aren't necessarily successful in the traditional classroom box have alternative means for acquiring those credits. Go out, here's an opportunity to do an internship. Here's an opportunity to do an apprenticeship. Here's an opportunity to show us what you know outside of the classroom, or turn your volunteer opportunity, or turn your community service into a credit. Because our school doesn't just serve those kids academically who are going to go on to college and who check off those 28 or 30 credits and go on to college. We also provide an education for the kids who struggle within that structure. As long as we're providing support, as you were saying, and infrastructure for those kids to be able to succeed outside the traditional structure and get credits, then I'm okay with increasing those credits. And in which case, you know, kids that can put together a car with your eyes blindfolded, you know, show me what you can do, and let's give you credit for that. So it's not just, you know, how much advanced calculus can you do?
So I'm going to sound like a broken record tonight, but it's absolutely a community conversation that needs to be had. And I'm grateful to see that the district did put out a survey. Two parents, I believe it was Runlet parents, that got that survey. So it's nice to know that already there is an effort to get parental input. It just so happens that in one of my previous roles with Reaching Higher New Hampshire, which is an education data and policy analysis organization, I actually did a research project around the credits offered for every district in the state, as well as their extracurricular process, and compared, I have to say, I had a bit of a bias. I was like peeking at Concord and comparing us to every other school. I mean, we have 194 districts, I think, in the state, so it was, it was a big task. And comparatively, from an extracurricular standpoint and from other opportunities outside of the classroom, Concord's in the top of that, of what we offer to our students. That being said, I keep coming back to, like, what is our why of school? And when we figure out our why, then we can establish the how. So, I am open to either direction, maintaining what we have or increasing, but I really don't think that can be done in isolation. We should have a larger, more robust conversation about what does a Concord High School graduate look like and what does, how do they show what they can know and do to their community when they leave?
Thank you, Sarah. It appears as if the concept of building a new school off of Clinton Street may be doomed based on the recommendation of the negotiating team with Centerpoint Church, which is advising its membership to vote against selling the property. However, this would appear to be an opportunity to rethink the entire project altogether. It's still astonishing to me that we're, that the district is considering building a $175 million middle school when a third of the current school is only 30 years old. Most of the complaints I've heard about the school itself are things that can be fixed with a lot less money than building a new school. And then there's the option, which has been discussed for over 20 years, of building a smaller middle school on the east side of the city that never seems to ever get looked at. That's where most of the new population growth is. That's where specialized bedrooms could be built for those people who need specialized rooms, who can't fit into the Runlet rooms that, you know, 70 years or 60 years' worth of children have gone through. Sarah, where do you come down on the Runlet project?
It sounds like you have some really interesting ideas, Tony. And I will admit that I'm in agreement that this opens up a new conversation. From my understanding, middle school is not exactly a winning experiment in the United States for our education. I would love to see, like, K through 8 schooling in our neighborhood schools, but we don't have the physical plant to support that. What we do have is we have a population of all of our elementary schools coming together at a very transformative age. And that school, Runlet, happens to be the exact same building that my husband went to middle school in, so, and you too, right? So, it's very clear that it's not just simple renovation that needs to happen. I think there's something to be said about the spaces that we create for our students when there are places of pride and belonging. Education thrives there. So it's clear that something needs to be done. I love the idea of building on potentially the Broken Ground property. I know that there's acreage there that would support a middle school building. But I think where the district fell short a little bit, and I don't necessarily think it's the district's fault. I know that there was a firm that was hired to help make this process happen. I think that we fell short of having those robust conversations that I like to see on a community level when you're going through this really immense project. I know there were focus groups that took place, but as somebody who's, like, really involved in the district and pays close attention to this, I didn't know that they had happened until they were completed. So, I would love to see this reopened as an opportunity to have full community buy-in and be able to examine what serves our kiddos best. You know, we ask Westsiders to, or I'm sorry, Eastsiders to spend eight of their 12 years traveling to the east side for their education. Does it make sense to have the middle school located on the east side and, you know, ask Westsiders to come to the east side and potentially have more buy-in in that half of the city? So there's, we could go all over the place, and I really want to see the community engage in that conversation in a real way.
So, I guess one of my concerns that I have about the entire Runlet project is that the community seems to feel that it's been left out of the conversation and that this is all a done deal, and it's behind closed doors, and they don't know what's going on, and everything's a secret. But I've got to, I've got to, I get asked this a lot, both on the street, at the multicultural event. People have got, people of Concord have got to understand that the conversation has yet to be had. The reason why we're not having the conversation, what about the why? What about this? What about that? Is because we are so at the infancy of this project. We have invited, as we should, the community to come in and give us input at the very inception, basically, of this project. The conversation of why not here or why not there hasn't even happened yet, and people are assuming that we've already made decisions about what's not going to happen. It hasn't even gotten there yet. I find that sort of incredible. In an attempt to be transparent, which is what everybody's wanted for years, transparency, 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 we're being transparent, and everyone's saying, well, why are you being secret about it? There's no secret. It hasn't happened yet. So the discussion about why not over at Broken Ground and the community hasn't been involved in that, because it hasn't happened yet. It's not that it's already happened. It hasn't happened yet. The conversation about the property on Clinton Street was that there was a discussion about whether or not the school district should look at whether or not that might be an applicable site. It hasn't gotten past that. We've only done a letter of intent to discuss it. We had to close on the letter of intent in order to be able to do the due diligence, but there's no point in paying for the due diligence on that property unless the church community decided that they're willing to sell it. We haven't even gotten to that point yet. I just find it frustrating that there's a lot of, well, why about the secrecy of the why and stuff? All we've done is we've said to people, we're having these discussions. That's it. In an effort to be transparent, we're letting everybody know we're having discussions. That's as far as this has gotten.
Can I interrupt, and I want to, I don't want to give you a chance to respond, and I want Dave to answer a similar response here. So, when you enter into a purchase and sale agreement
But we haven't entered into a purchase and sale.
So, you did enter
No.
You entered into an agreement with the church
To discuss.
To purchase the property.
No.
You're talking about figures
No, we haven't.
About what you sell for.
No, we haven't entered into a purchase and sale agreement. Absolutely not. Absolutely incorrect. There is a letter of intent to discuss. That's it.
When you get to the point where you're, when you're talking about dollar amounts for property, that isn't, that isn't, that's, that's, that's really close to getting to the point where you're going to buy the land.
It is not, no, there's not a purchase and sale. Absolutely incorrect, Tony.
Okay. And the city, the reason the city has such distrust is the fact that we went through an elementary school process, which went on for eight or nine years, and the, everything that was first proposed, eight or nine years later was done. We tore down historic buildings that were perfectly useful. There was all kinds of other trumped-up things. People don't trust the school district or the school board. And I know most of those people have cleaned house.
It's because, hey, they're not there anymore.
They're not there anywhere. But, but that's why people, I think, are upset. Karen, let me skip over you and just go to Dave, and then we'll come back, okay?
I'm not frustrated because I understand the process. First of all, it's, Runlet as a facility, we have looked at a lot of these things. We have looked at a lot of different properties. We have considered two middle schools. We have considered a lot of different things. But when you get into actual property, a lot of that ends up being non-public, because by law, we can't, we can't discuss those things in public. And it's frustrating, because I, you know, everyone's telling me that, you know, rebuild on Runlet, and I'm like, well, maybe that will be the answer, but we're just not really there yet. But it's, and, and let me explain something. This is also tied to state building aid, which we won't be able to build, you know, a bunkhouse if we don't get state building aid. And there are, there is criteria for that that we have to meet, and it's not obligating to a space, but it's obligating to a process. We need to, we need to replace Runlet Middle School, because we have looked at what it would cost to renovate it, you know? And yes, I did go there when I was 10 years old. Now I'm 60 or something like that. So, I'm old, but, but we did, you know, we have looked at that as, you know, potentially for renovating, and you're right. Certain aspects that are not 60 years old, there is, there is, there's a smaller, there's a smaller amount, but I think we have, we are doing due diligence, and no decisions have really been made.
Okay, we're running out of time. I want to get Karen, and then we're going to do one more quick question and go to closing.
Okay. So, I feel like my perspective in having worked in the legislative environment, in the state environment, is that I feel like the normal citizen, or average, not normal, average citizen, doesn't necessarily know the extensive processes that are placed on us in government. And so, when you hear letter of intent, you know, just as an average citizen, you're like, oh my gosh, we're going to buy this property. That's terrible. And, and so, you know, it might not be in the context of this long process that for each each step that it takes is, it's required. It's something that has to get done in order to take the next step. You know, these processes can linger for years. They can be excruciatingly long, feel long. And at the end of the day, everybody just really wants a great new school that inspires learning, that is, you know, has, is ADA compliant and has good HVAC systems, like there's this hope on the hill. And, and so the longer we talk about it without taking those necessary steps, the further out that gets pushed. So I appreciate that these discussions need to continue. I believe there is another charrette coming up in late October, which I think will be very useful, because, you know, now it sounds like one of the options, one of the doors might be closing, you know, so it shifts the conversation. But I don't, you know, I don't hold it against the board for, the district, for moving forward with the steps that they know must be taken in order to get going.
What I'm going to say, schools also cannot be designed the same way. The way we're designing these schools is very different, given the social, emotional needs of the kids and the community. And so, you know, they're not laid out that way anymore. There's some really cool designs that we've looked at. We've looked at other schools. We have done a lot of work in this area. So, thank you.
I want to get to closing statements, but real quick, yes or no answer, each one of you. This is going to be up for a vote for voters on the charter commission. Should the school board set stipend amounts, Dave? Yes or no?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Sarah, should the treasurer and clerk be appointed? Yes or no?
Ah.
Yes or no?
Off the top of my head, no.
Yes.
Is don't know an answer?
Yes.
Okay. And should the, Dave, should the charter be amended to require voters to gather at least 1,000 signatures or more to have another charter commissioner to make any amendments to the charter? Yes or no?
I don't know.
I'm going to, I'm going to hold off on, on that study session.
I have, I didn't even know that was part of the charter thing.
I didn't understand a word you just said. You said it far too fast. So I didn't process it.
You have to gather signatures, and they have to be at least 1,000. And right now, they're a percentage of the turnout, which makes it much lower. They're going to raise the amount of signatures you have to, to get to change the charter.
Yeah, I feel like I'm going to side with everyone else and say, a hard, I don't know.
All right. So I want to thank you all. Let's go to closing statements. We're going to start with Sarah and work our way around this way. Let's get it around a minute, okay?
I'll be as brief as possible. Hi, I'm Sarah Robinson. I'm running for the District C seat for wards eight, nine, and 10. I believe in community service. I believe in the strength of our district and the vibrancy of our community. And I hope to bring an equity, student-centered lens to the work that I would do on the school board, and I hope I can count on your vote on November 8.
I'm Gina Cannon. I am also running in, are we now going to count, call them voting zone C? I live in Ward 10. I'm the current incumbent, for what that's worth. And I'd like to think that I bring a thoughtfulness, a balance, and fiscal conservancy to the school board.
I am Karen Meeker, and I'm running for District B, which is wards five, six, and seven. For me, I'm just really excited to dig in, to do the research, to participate in meetings, to listen to all of the different groups that are invested in our community and our schools. I have the energy, I have the excitement, and I just really look forward to what's next for us. So I hope you'll show up on the 8th and vote for Karen Meeker.
That's me.
I want to thank everyone. I wish we could all be on the board. And it's, it's really exciting to have races, because the city needs younger people to get involved and be part of our community. I'm David Parker. I'm running again to be on the school board. I think people know that I'm an independent voice. I'm not easily convinced of anything. I really think I've always had the students' best interest. So if people get selfish about what they want, I always think about, first of all, is it going to, what's it going to cost us? But more importantly, how's it going to impact on these individual kids? And I've spent my life in the field of education, a field that I bring a great deal of experience and knowledge of not only education, special education, but also the Concord community. Interestingly enough, when I was a student, I was an act, I've always been active, but it was in my high school that we actually passed so that students could be on the school board. And my brother was the first person to sit on the school board, who was a couple of years younger than me. So I'm a native. I've left for years to work in colleges and other things, but I'm back and have been back, and would be really welcoming your vote. Thank you.
So voters in Concord, those are your four candidates for two seats in our competitive races this year in 2022. I want to thank Concord TV again for cosponsoring this event and WKXL 1450. Again, Tuesday, November 8th is election day. The polls are open from 7 to 7, so get out and vote. And don't forget, Ward 5 voters, vote at McCullough Elementary School now, and Ward 4 voters, vote at the Green Street Community Center behind City Hall. I'm Tony Chanel from Concord, New Hampshire Patch. We'll see you next time.